To the 6:00 PM City Council meeting, we are reconvening. It's the July 1st, 2025 City Council meeting. Yeah, that is very loud. Please note that all council members are present. Is Ken on line?
I'm here and I can hear you. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie, thank you. With that, I'll turn the time over to Vice Chair Hyer to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any acknowledgements tonight? Councilmember Chaburka, we look to you to...
Well, I mean, I'll just say, the farmer's market is still doing great every Saturday. It's a wonderful event. Go check it out.
There are a lot of people down there, that's for sure. All right, nothing else?
It does seem appropriate that we acknowledge the our Independence Day commemoration. I guess that was the word I was looking for. It's coming up this Friday. Everybody probably already knows that, probably a work off. But kind of a special day for our country to celebrate that, so worth acknowledging that. Sorry, I wore my tie.
I see that. Yeah, nice tie. All right, anything else? All right, let's move on. Approval of minutes. We have the Joint Work Session of April 1st, 2025. Councilmember Myers.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have reviewed the minutes on the April 1st Joint Work Session. Do they are correct?
Great. The regular meeting of April 1st, 2025. Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes, Chair, and I can't remember who reviewed the work session on the new market tax credits, but I think I have a similar comment. It's just as exciting and exhilarating reviewing those. And I found them to be accurate and our reporters are awesome.
The Joint Work Session of May 13th, 2025. Councilmember Graff.
Yeah, upon review, I find them to be accurate to the best of my recollection.
The Special Meeting of May 13th, 2025. Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
And the last, but probably never the least, the Work Session of May 27, 2025. Councilmember Chaburka.
Yes, Chair, I've read those minutes and they're accurate to my recollection, and I propose we approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Chaburka, second by Councilmember Blair, to approve the minutes. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the next. This is a proposed partial street vacation of 331 Stewart Drive.
All right, council members, it's good to be with you tonight. Proposal we're looking at is indicated a partial vacation of Stewart Drive, not the whole thing. And this is in our BDO. We do have Aaron Austin here with BDO if there's questions or any discussion that needs to be had. Just to kind of get our bearings, the highlighted red here shows the location. And what's kind of triggered this is a redevelopment project that the BDO is working on, which also includes a subdivision plat and is, design work commenced on that. It was determined that there needed to be some modification to the right-of-way. So just to give some context, it's a fairly large property that has been cleared for redevelopment, just over 14 acres. And they're proposing to develop a new industrial warehouse building. Just to kind of show the minor vacation here, it's just a few feet that would be modified along Stewart Drive. And part of this is to deal with the subdivision plat. As you can see, this entire parcel engulfs Stewart Drive, so there isn't actually a dedic-- there's a section here where there isn't actually a dedicated street. And so there is going to be a dedication with this, with the subdivision. But we wanted to make sure those right-of-way lines would line up with the improved infrastructure that's in place. So there's some sidewalk and existing park strip area, those would all align. And so this adjustment accommodates that. And this, the subdivision plat that we're looking at, that includes that dedication and then shows, kind of see it's highlighted here of that area that would be vacated. This also does support and allow the development of this site. Here's a site plan and building elevation showing what we're looking at trying to get developed. There is some challenges, as you can see at the, kind of the southeast end of the site. It's hard to orient. Everything's kind of skewed a little bit out there. But there's a strange angle there that makes it difficult to get that access open for trucks and things. We want those to be back behind the building off the street. And so vacation will also help so they can get that landscape set back off the street and meet those zoning requirements. And so just kind of show right-of-way width going from, it varies, but 60-foot right-of-way width to approximately 55. Nothing's straight out there, it seems like it. So this, they would definitely need to maintain at least 54 feet for the collector's street that this would function as, and so this would be above that minimum that we would want to see. And again, just to align with the dedicated street with Stewart Drive. Plan Commission did review this and recommended approval, subject to providing some correct verbiage of legal description, and this is while it was still in review. That has been provided, reviewed, and approved by staff and just pending favorable adoption of the ordinance by the council.
I have a question if that's okay. So just to confirm, I think you probably really addressed this, but this is not vacating anything that has current infrastructures, street infrastructure on it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, just would align with the existing infrastructure, the sidewalks.
Any other questions for Joe? The petitioner's here. Aaron, do you want to, yeah, have anything you want to...
It's nice to see him once in a while.
I know.
Thanks, yeah, it's great to see you guys. And thanks again for all your wonderful service to the community and being on the City Council. So just a couple of things to kind of point out here. With BDO, when we've developed BDO, it's really hard as we're laying out roadways to figure out where the right-of-way is going to land. And that's really where this is kind of situated, is when we dedicated that portion of Stewart, we didn't know exactly where it was going to end up. So it's really, the majority of BDO, it's on the back of sidewalk. The right-of-way goes to the right of the back sidewalk. I don't have that picture there, but if you look, really, this is correcting it, putting it right to the back of sidewalk where it should be on that property line. I think the other thing that's really important to point out is usually when you vacate a road, you're giving that property to a developer or whoever. In this case, you're giving it to yourselves. So it's really a correction of a line from one piece of Ogden City property to another piece of Ogden City property. So anyway, just that kind of helps out knowing you're not really losing anything. It's just helping to position the building a little bit better. Any questions for me at all?
Any questions? No, that's great.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
All right. This is a public hearing, so if anybody wants to speak to this particular item, please come up, state your name, and you have three minutes. Movement online?
Seal. Chair, I'm seeing no movement, and I would make a motion that we close the public hearing on this.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Graff, to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any...
Aye.
All right. Motion for the... We need a motion for the ordinance.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed ordinance 2025-20.
I think Councilmember Myers' mic is off.
There we go. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed ordinance 2025-20, vacating a portion of Stewart Drive.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Myers, second by Councilmember Chaburka, to adopt the proposed ordinance 2025-20. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye. That passes. All right.
All right.
Go make that road. Next on our agenda is new business. Glenn Simes, come on up.
Thank you very much. So we're almost done with the budget. So we've got this piece and then Janine's piece, and we should be good until next week when we do a budget amendment. So, thanks. So this is, as I mentioned, kind of the last piece of the formal part of the budget, and this is adopting the certified tax rate. So I touched on this a couple of weeks ago. But just to give you a definition and a little bit of background, the certified tax rate, based on the state code, means a tax rate that will provide the same ad valorem property tax revenue for a taxing entity as was budgeted by the taxing entity for the prior year. So what that means is, as a taxing entity, we're allowed to get the same revenue we collected the previous year. New growth is added on top of that. And so because that's, it's based on taxable value, as that, as our total taxable value decreases, that rate increases, I'm sorry, the rate decreases, so we get the same revenue and then vice versa. But there's no inflationary adjustment built into that calculation. So it's the same revenue that we got the previous year without an inflationary adjustment. So if you go to propertytax.utah.gov, you can get a lot more information on all of this and how this is calculated. But this is the formula that they use to determine how that new growth is calculated and how the budgeted revenue is calculated, and then in turn, how that rate is calculated. But it really all boils down to this equation. It's on the bottom. And it's also there on the right. This is from the Weber County Assessor's website. It's that budgeted revenue divided by the taxable value, and that's what gives you the tax rate. And for Ogden City, this is what it looks like for us this year. So you can see the $21 million in revenue, the budgeted revenue divided by the $9.6 billion in total valuation, gives us a tax rate of .002193. As I mentioned, the new growth is on top of that, so you take that $21 million, add the $473,736 in new growth, that gives us the $21.5 million in total revenue. And this chart shows all of the tax rates, and the blue line on the bottom there, that is the certified tax rate that was received by the county for all of the years, and the orange line is what was adopted by the council. So you can see five years of those past 13 fiscal years. We did a truth in taxation and we increased the property taxes. And the first one was in 2016. That was the biggest one. And you can see that big dip right there. So that was the expiration of a general obligation bond that came off. And essentially, what the city did was just adopted what the rate would have been had that geo-bond not come off. So that's the biggest jump. That was the first one we did in 2016. And then a couple of others, when we held the rate a couple of years after that, one in 2022, and then one last year. There's nothing like that proposed for this year. So we're proposing that you accept the certified tax rate provided by the county, which is the .002193 number. The county also provides us with an average property value, so this is a county number. But we like to go through and just show what the tax bill or what the Ogden City portion of the tax bill would be on that average value. So 431, 942 was their average value that they provided us. The taxable value is going to be different. Residential property is taxed at 55% of the assessed value. Non-residential is taxed at 100, so that's why you see those numbers that are different there. So 237, 568 is what the taxable value would be. If you apply that tax rate, the tax bill would be $520.99 on that valuation. And that far, the far right column is just for comparison, just if the valuation had not changed from last year to this year, based on the same rate, you can see how that tax bill did actually go down a little bit based on that rate going down. Obviously, it's much more complicated than that, and in the packet, I did include some additional analysis on those properties that I included last year that I did the analysis on when we were considering the multiple rates, and then carried that into this year so you can see not only how the rate has changed, but how those valuations have changed. So those valuations changed, there were a number of properties last year that had a valuation change that was huge, 14%, 15%. If you look at those valuation changes on those same properties, it was pretty minor, like 2% or 3% on almost every one of them this year. So that was much less significant this year. So speaking of valuations, it is important to note that the county does evaluation and not the city. So if people are interested in filing an appeal on their, on their valuation, that is a county process, but they can do that. And that goes through the Board of Equalization with the county. Appeals are usually due for just regular appeals by the middle part of September, and then they go through their own process and make adjustments if it's necessary. And if folks are interested in that, they can go to that website there or call the number or just get ahold of the Weber County Assessor's Office. And the county does offer some tax relief programs. These are administered, again, by the county, by the clerk's office, and so there's a number of those available there. And then the city does offer utility bill discount based on that county eligibility. So if folks are interested in exploring those, you may have a benefit with your city utility bill as well. So I mentioned that this certified tax rate and the tax bill is just for Ogden City's portion. This shows the percentage of a total tax bill, so every property in the city would have it split this way. You can see that the school district is the majority. 56% of the tax bill goes to the school district. Ogden City is about 18%. Weber County is 16%. And there are a number of different line items for Weber County. So if you look at your tax bill, you'll see probably five or six different Weber County elements to that. But if you add them all up together, it's about 16%. And then Central Weber at 4%, and then the other ones as they go down. So I put some asterisks by the school district and by Central Weber on there because those are two entities that are going through the truth and taxation process this year. That's all I have for you. Be happy to answer. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Glenn? All right.
Chair, I'm making a motion that we adopt the certified tax rate and have Resolution 2025-13.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Graff, to adopt proposed Resolution 2025-13. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye. That passes. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 financial principles.
Chair White, if it's all right, I'm just going to do this from the desk because it's such a short little thing. I put up the, show the one change that we're making to the financial principles. It's really just a change intent that instead of make funding available for the 24 compensation plan, we just continue prioritizing funding for that. All of the other financial principles remain the same from last year.
Any questions for Janine?
If not, I'd like to propose we adopt proposed Joint Resolution 2025-4.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Chaburka, second by Councilmember Graff, to adopt the proposed Joint Resolution 2025-4. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers? Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye. That passes. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding concerns or ideas on any topics. Please come up and state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi. I'm Mick Humphries. I'm one of the artists from the Gallery 25, one of the LLC members. And each Monday, or not each Monday, but once a month, we have a meeting there. And every month, it seems to be getting more and more contentious over the parking situations and also the proposals, I guess they're proposals, of possible future parking regulations. And what I've heard from those, and I'm not sure how accurate they are. In fact, they wanted me to take my, more of my share of the load there. That's why I'm here tonight. Everybody there knows more than I do. And they wanted me to do several different things. I said not till I know more what's going on. But what we've heard would pretty much take our gallery out of the, out of commission, the parking situation. We have members of the board that are familiar with Jackson Hole area and the parking situations they've gone through up there, and also have Sioux City had a tourist type area. And I guess one of the things they're most upset with, they don't feel, or we don't feel that we're getting an opportunity to express our opinions of what's going to happen down on 25th Street. We were told that there's surveys going out, but nobody in the gallery has ever received a survey. Anyway, I'm just here to express our concerns and request that we be part of the decision. And there's people in that board that met last night, a lot of them know adjoining business owners, and apparently they seem to express the same concerns, some.
Great. All right. Thank you.
I guess the best way to get our input is to get on the agenda. Is that correct?
We, let's go through everybody's public hearing, and then we'll address your concerns. If you just hang around for a few minutes. Don't leave. How's that? Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Hi, Travis Pete. I had the opportunity this morning to go to the Save the Date, the kickoff of the event for basically America 250. It was down at the State Capitol. Congressman Blake Moore was there, so I think that was pretty great that we're represented for our section of the state for that. I brought you each the bookmark essentially for a milestone. Basically, it says the milestone in 250 years in the making. It talks about education, engaging, and uniting. So educate, recognize the history and values and civic responsibilities that shape our nation. Engage, celebrate the unique traditions of communities throughout the state. And unite, envision the future of our state and nation through conversation and connection. And I know we've talked a lot about that with even just the, just involve Ogden and a lot of the things that have been happening. So I think our new general plan, obviously us being able to welcome the Olympics, a lot of those types of things are pretty amazing. So one of the ones that I thought was pretty awesome, and I meant to get a few more stickers for you, but they actually, it says Walk 250. So encourage every Utahan to walk or roll 250 miles within the year, and we'll honor the nation's 250th anniversary and connect with Utah's landscape. And so I think that that's one of the neat things that we've seen with how engaged our community is, particularly when we talked about the golf course and trails and all those other things. So I just wanted to encourage each of you individually as elected officials to do that. And then I added a little bit to it, so gave you each a little pal pen. So I'll give those here, and we'll just make sure Councilmember Ritchie gets his. But one for Mayor as well as the council. But like I said, I just, I think there's just some tremendous opportunities. And I think we still probably need to refocus and say, is there a park or is a space that we can dedicate and try to put things together within the year? So just like we did with the D Memorial Park in 1976 for the bicentennial. So if we could do that for now, that would appreciate it. And then also, I just, we can run, you can, I'll leave the copies for that for the Utah Museum, which opens next June. Museum of Utah, coming State Capitol Complex in 2026. So if you haven't been to the Capitol, there's this beautiful horseshoe of buildings now instead of that weird building that was there before. One of them will be the museum. And so I think if we can team with our union station, say what from our archives needs to be there, and they're looking for partnerships for not only inspiring Utah, becoming Utah, building Utah, and connecting Utah. So whatever we can do, even if the archives stay closed for a period of time for us, that we say, hey, what can we help you with for the state museum? Thanks.
Great suggestions. Thanks, Travis. Any other comments?
Hi, Deborah Darrington. I didn't realize how passionate I was about the history in Ogden until this week. And also, grand announcement, I had a new little baby grandson last night. And as I weighed out whether to go and see him or to come and express my cause for the historic preservation of Ogden, here I am. I did see him last night, and he's adorable. In regards to the historic part of Ogden, this was my downtown when I was growing up. It was my city, even though I lived in Syracuse. And I was so thrilled to move here, as I've expressed before. But I would ask each of you to consider within your own heart, and very sincerely and honestly, do you really care about the history of Ogden? I don't want you to feel like you have to care about... I don't want you to feel like you have to care about it like I do, but I'll tell you the problems that I'm running into. I have no business plan whatsoever with Leroy Echols' home. But over the course of the past couple of days, I have discovered that Chantilly Mansion, which I restored and lovingly took stewardship of for 30 years until turning it back to the great-grandchildren of Rufus Adams. Rufus Adams was the vice president of First National Bank of Ogden. I discovered two days ago that Leroy Echols was the president of First National Bank of Ogden. There are more than that coincidence that have occurred as I have gone through to restore and lovingly pour my heart, money, time, whoo, and effort into preserving this history. As we were doing additional landscape to preserve and return as much of the sunken gardens at Leroy's home as we could, there's a beautiful stained glass window on the south side of that beautiful mansion that, as I have heard through the grapevine, that was a gift that was given to his wife Myrtle, and the gardens are depicted in that stained glass. So I have a pretty good example of what used to be there. I also find myself to be pretty intuitive because the brick that I ordered from Pennsylvania and had handmade in wooden blocks, as we were digging up on the property this week, we dug up bricks that as my employees laid those bricks on top of the bricks from Pennsylvania, we found ourselves having to look at the insignia or the logo on the bricks to be able to determine which was the original and which came from Pennsylvania. So I'm going to run out of time, but I beg you for one minute, especially since we have kind of an empty room here, if you could. So I found myself at the second floor and at landmarks submitting so that I could continue the preservation. The problem that I've ran into is that, may I take a minute to express this really quick, Chairman?
15 seconds.
15 seconds, got it. So the way it stands now, by the time I go through landmarks and go through permitting, all costs aside from that, I am going to be August at the soonest before I can start putting up a fence that originally existed there. So if you can give consideration to that, I'll sit down and let you mull over how much you love the history of this city.
Thanks, Deborah. Anyone else in the chambers? The only couple over there? No? Okay. Anyone online? All right. Let me get to the next piece of that. Since there's no one else, we'll move to answer the questions, which are, sorry, I had to, let's talk a little bit about the parking. I know that there's been a lot of outreach that is happening around parking, so I don't know if, was it Godfrey, is that? Humphries, I'm sorry. You could tell us about what you're doing around that.
Absolutely. In fact, I don't want any business to feel that way. So in the back, our Deputy Director of Community Economic Development, David Sawyer, is in the back. He's been really closely tied to the community engagement outreach on the parking issue. If you have time, he'd be happy to sit and talk with you one-on-one. I'd be happy to sit and talk as well. And if there's others we need to talk to, we will. We're putting in a ton of energy and engagement around for businesses, so certainly we haven't been able to hit everybody, and certainly there's no consensus about it. But we do, we are working really hard to make sure that we're empowering businesses to give us information to help. And I definitely want to hear what you're hearing too, to make sure it's what's being discussed for sure too, just so we make sure we're all on the same page. So whatever you need to get your questions answered, you have my commitment and our staff to help, okay?
I don't know if you can see David there.
David Sawyer in the back, yeah. He's a fantastic guy. I vouch for his character. He's a good dude. I do it myself, but he's a better man than I am, so.
And then I know that, Travis, just thank you for that going down and representing Ogden down today at the Capitol. But I do know that, or I think we have somebody that's working on the 250-year event here.
Yeah, so thanks for going down, thanks for the pin. So we had, in fact, former Councilmember Luis Lopez is on the statewide committee, right? I don't know if you saw him down there, he was down there today. And we have a local committee, planning committee, I think Councilmember Hayer's on that, along with our, some of our event planning staff. And we're working, we'll be working on some projects around our contribution to celebrating America 250. And just so the council's aware, you'll be seeing a transmittal in about a week or so. We're preparing it right now, and you'll receive it on your end for all of that. It's in the works, and thanks for repping O-Town down there. And rest assured you weren't alone. And then, do you mind if I answer a question on Deborah's?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I think it sounds like there's a permitting issue.
Yeah, I was just taking notes. Well, I'm happy to look into it and see if there's anything we can do to help. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And I think we all care about the history here, so.
Oh, yeah.
All right, any other comments from the mayor?
Nothing additional at this time, other than just speaking for myself, I haven't had the journey you have with the history, but I appreciate it to the point that you, I really would encourage you to see your grandbaby.
Yeah.
Next time. Not because I don't want to see you, but speaking for myself, you can rest assured I take it serious. Thanks, you guys.
I was going to say congratulations.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments from the council? Jeez.
Most adjourned.
All right. We need a second. We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer, second by Councilmember Blair to adjourn. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.